You're on. Dan is calling the public meeting board, the public hearings. The village of Homer planning board. Village clerk will ring the public notice boards. Well, the care number one application filed by Auburn Brook Flats LLC for review and approval of a subdivision consisting of four point four two acres located on D Street off of Route eleven. Tax back number six six dot four two dash oh two dash oh one dot one hundred in the northern home. Okay, now anybody have anything, any comments on this particular item? As you've sort of noticed from your, from the agenda. This, this board approved the subdivision in September twenty twenty one. And subdivision map was signed by the chairman of the village planning board. And the applicant did not file a map in a timely manner and the filing time has expired. No changes have been made to the map since September twenty twenty one approval. The applicant seeks approval of the subdivision order to file with the county clerk, the same map as approved in September twenty twenty one. Anybody, anybody in the public to comment, board members? No comments, I would entertain a motion to close, close the public hearing.
I will make a question.
Jessica?
About publicly.
Second.
Mine? All in favor? Close? No? Okay. And then now open the regular meeting portion. And we will need a motion to reapprove. The Arbor Brook Flats subdivision.
Included in that motion, if you could just include the negative declaration from seeker from twenty twenty one would still stand and issue an additional negative declaration now. As, as long as you're still comfortable with that previous determination and that none of the circumstances have changed to more in a different impact on the environment as opposed to the review then.
I'll show. Eight one?
Yes.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion, yeah, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Any discussion? Okay.
I do have a question because I didn't, I don't remember this being part of the report. It says that there are local federal wetlands. And there are endangered species that can determine whether or not they were gone through. Disturbing them?
Recollection is the rest all in all. It looks like the, the species is the floaters and bald eagle. So this, the question would be, does anybody know if any bald eagle nests up there and has there been a site inspection confirming there aren't any? Assuming that's the case from the applicant's perspective.
I've never seen any there in the four plus years I guess we've been following this. Nothing out of sight unless the Japanese not read. Attempting to kill all weekend, but no, I've never seen any of that in a wetland, nothing living well.
And what's the floater?
Um.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I think it's the ducks, right?
Oh, duck?
Yeah.
You're not filling any fonts?
I think.
There's no duck.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's wet, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Is it a duck or is that's another word for duck?
I don't know, that's eagle, I might.
Yeah.
I want to know what we're approving.
That's muscle.
Yeah, floaters and muscle.
Yep.
Oh, it is. I've seen those in our. Yeah. My study.
Apparently they are.
Freshwater muckle.
They are current or endangered species under the secret list, yeah. And so pop, if there's any marshy wetlands around there, it could have the muscles in. How funny you hear about the zebra mussels out in Rochester, they're amazing versus this. How about leeches? Don't worry about those.
So I guess I don't think I was on the planning board for this, so what is this, is it anything like a housing development?
It is.
Okay.
Uh, it's a housing development, there are seventeen individual buildings. Fifteen of those duplexes.
Okay.
Um, two of them are four flexes, they're all individually on them. This is at, it's been before the board twice. The first time it was intended to be a co-op. With condos. And we could not get that through the state attorney general's office for the way that we would build them. So we changed what everything exactly the same was the layouts and everything else. But we went and did a zero line line development. And that's the, that is the, the approved subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I was from the village's perspective after this will be a dedication of the road at the village board level. And then there's some work to connect the water mains up there that they've been working on along village engineer.
Oh, yeah, I think we're gonna move them so that you get just better service, please. Better fire, better water quality, the whole thing, so great as well.
Good questions.
I think you were on the board, if I remember hearing this. And actually had questions about the lighting. The street lighting.
Yeah, I think.
We had somebody change. But okay, we need floaters.
I don't remember a floater and a. I don't remember a floater, so.
But when it, it had already been approved for the condo, I think, and then they came back. Okay, so it was a second, it was just the plan had changed at the condos. Single and duplexes?
Yes.
Yeah.
What's, what's your plan in terms of starting the board?
Um, again, we've been working with the village concerning the roadway. Uh, in the dedication of the roadway, if that looks to be moving forward as we believe it is. Um, next steps really are to get with the utility folks coming in and we've already moved the, the pole, we're in the north, driving the Hudson, so that's out of the way. We have to pull and put services in for the site. Um, and at the same time, we would begin selling and moving, getting things forward. So hopefully, if we can do this thing, we'd really like to get something in the ground before the winter. Um, going another, going a whole nother almost year with nothing going on there this far. So we'd really like that we get it moving quickly, so we're hoping within the next few months, we can actually get that, start selling and start, start building something. Seems to be some decent, um, uh, amount of interest. Uh, we're getting, still getting calls and people wondering, so hopefully we can get it going quickly to get going, so we're hoping. Late summer, early fall, hopefully to maybe get, get something in the ground.
Okay, so let's just recap, Mike, your motion to reapprove the Arbor Brook Flat subdivision. With the negative declaration seeker from the previous. Cool. So that motion may be called a seconded. Um, all in favor? I. opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Arne, I promise I won't do this one.
Where are your maps?
And, um, Jimmy Stocklin was drawing new ones because we needed them new ones. So he was drawing, I was just gonna ask Fran what if he'd seen them yet, we tried to get him to do them, but it can be a little. About a golf night or not, but we will, if he doesn't have them, I'm sure we'll drop them off when they're there or something. I'll be holding them in the car, so we'll get them done to the side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then, because that was the one that Fran had the conflict on and I was representing you guys, I will bow out and Fran will come back in. Nice to see you all again and much happier to be on this side of the board. I hope you don't hold it against me. Yeah, yeah, nice to meet you all in person this time.
Yeah.
I'm a little talented, so just a little bit, yeah, so maybe.
Yeah. I didn't recognize you at first, I had, I'd seen him once.
Oh, I knew exactly who he was.
You know what, what, no, right?
Yeah.
I, I, I think I knew. I learned his name and I was like, oh my God, I'm looking at it, I was like.
Fran, why don't you go over, instant over in the corner here? You want access to the door, Don, I tried, I tried to avoid leaning up here.
Escape room.
I never really liked being that close up. I'm just, I got a quick question. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I have a problem, yeah, you should allow, okay, but you can limit what you want in your case, yeah, but you can do that, absolutely. Okay. Item two. Is the, uh. Application of Carl and Mary Ann Fidel. For a minor subdivision at forty six Northern Fulton Street in a B one zone. And. It's, there's a. A little concerned with. The application because. The written narrative says that it's a one point eight acre parcel. And the map, the survey map says two point one four. Now, this will make any big difference probably, except that we're going to approve a, a quarter acre. Subdivision out of this. If the numbers should reflect accurately, I agree. Was, is the applicant here?
No, are they online maybe? No.
And it lives in a prohead now. No, I just, you know, I, I don't really, I really would not like to delay it, but I, I, I think this is another thing, we've run into this again. Um, here, and I thought we had this. I, I think these applicants have to be told. That they need to be either physically present or present, we call that zoom board, I believe, moment. Um, because it's imperative that they're either, or we need, so that the board can ask them questions on their project. Um, and I understand, it looks like it's a relatively minor matter, I know what the county has done. But I, I think part of the situation here is they need to be here so that the board can ask them questions. Um. I, I don't understand why we, because this isn't the first time, it's happened on multiple occasions. That the applicant under this board of the ZBA where they're not present for the meetings. Now, I think, yeah, I don't know if you want to do that. Um, they can start over again. Um. It depends on what level your questions are down, I guess. Well, as I said, you know. There's a conflict between survey map and what the written application says. Survey map says that, that it's a two point one four acre.
If you look on their site plan application, they did write that. And then they crossed it out and put one point eight.
Look on the.
If you look on the short environmental assessment form, it says two point four, or two point one four.
Yeah, I think.
I'm wondering if. They're indicating that after it's subdivided, that's what the sign is gonna be?
Which would be what?
That would be left?
You get the two things together, they don't have, add up to one point eight.
Point two acres is the. Is the, uh. Separate is the smaller parcel, the new one, nine thousand square feet, point two acres. If you had point two to one point eight, you come to two point zero and not two point one four. Minor detail, but you know, uh. Again, there's, there's conflicting numbers and it just.
I, I suggest we postpone this and ask them to clarify, just be here the next meeting.
I agree.
So, Mike, we need someone to move that we delay any action until the next.
And we press, request they're present at the next meeting.
People are gonna make a formal request again.
Right?
Make a formal request that the applicant be here.
Yes.
Part of me, yes.
So Mike's motion is that we'll table to the next regular meeting and request that the applicants be present at that meeting. And when we, when we tell them, when we request they be here, we tell them why we want. And second. Yes. All in favor? Opposed? Very, thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Is the application. From Caitlin Porchline, owner of Porchline Family Home LLC, and Caitlin is here tonight. Thank you for being here, but, you know. Helps me feel like easier and hopefully yours. If you, if you've read the application. It's for a modification of what we originally approved for a, um. What did we call it before? Adult.
Adult.
Adult care. And if you want to address the board, please, it's better to say it in your words than mine.
So I'm new to filling out all paperwork too, so, uh. We were looking at opening the adult home that kind of, it phases, so the Brewster House also has like the adult daycare. Where you can, you know, bring somebody there. Um, and so we wanted to get it open, um, in some way, right? While we're working on the licensure process and, you know, there's the lack of aides in the community and, you know, all of that. So we can help them showers and the baths and the meals and, um, their laundry and things like that in the facility. Um, and we work on the opening of the adult home. So I'm not saying, and I didn't say that we were never going to open that approved adult home, it was more of. Phase one where we can open it, uh, but what is legally allowable, the department of health where you have one inside. Um, to serve the community and then, uh, the adult home.
So essentially your plan is this is just to, to get some money coming in until you get the license approved?
Right, and to help the community too, you know, like they, they don't have, you know, everybody knows, they don't have the aides, they don't have people to help them at home and you can fill that gap, what's needed.
Uh. This was. Applied as a, as an area variance, which would require going to the ZBA. Now, my understanding is that this board can, can interpret that this is only a phase in step. And that we do not have to go, do not have to also refer to the ZBA, am I correct?
I'm not too sure, you know, I talked with Kevin and I talked a little bit with Dan about this. I don't understand. What is the area variance for?
Um, I think again, the terminology would be, I'm sorry, I'm not. All of it, um, but Kevin I know had, um, expressed concern and he just wanted me to show kind of what I was going to be planning on drop offs. Because he was worried about if there was a transportation increase on Front Street. Myself, I felt like it wouldn't be much more of an increase than having an adult home with that many people. Um, and, you know, with a, a day program, they drop off and leave, they're not staying, they're not parking. Um, it's for respite, so there, there isn't really a traffic issue like with dropping off or parking where the whole road, you know, will be, um. The adult home, like I said, which was already approved, that would have, I would say, more traffic with people staying and residing there and visitors, um, than this.
Yeah, I'm not too sure, because I can't really understand the map. It says in the beginning of the county referral, that an area variance was requested, but I don't know what the area variance is for.
It's at the home where he sent it to the county first?
Yep.
So he just sent it there because he wanted to make sure that there was no issue or concern within five hundred feet of eighty one?
Yeah, we have to, because it's five hundred feet, we have to send it there.
I don't believe it is five hundred feet from what he told me, but they did send a letter saying that there's no issue or concern and to send it back to the home.
I, I understand that, but in the, in their letter, I think that's what's causing Don a little bit. Prepare it a little bit, if you're reading the very first part of their letter, they're saying an area variance, do you see that? And I don't know why they got in there an area variance because, yeah, even whether, yeah.
Definitely what.
Why, why, why there's an area variance, because it says vault two, um. Clearly that there is, I don't know what we're varying from. Um. And this board doesn't decide variances. What this board does sign, decide, it's in the middle part of that county letter. It says because it's in R two district, uh, and adult homes are such, such as that is acceptable. But it's acceptable only under site plan review. Think it's in that letter, do you see it there?
I don't see the letter at all.
You don't have a letter?
Uh.
I never even got this.
It says.
You know, um, this is what's, what's saying, it's in there.
Oh, it's in here.
Where it's saying.
There it is.
Is.
Oh, no, that's.
In the letter.
Yeah, I've got it for Arbor Brook.
Come on, go on, I'm gonna say, there's a letter. Um, here it is, May seventh, two thousand twenty four, Caitlin Porchline, owner of Porchline Family Home LLC. Then it says in the very first, it's right there on the top, the staff of Portland County Planning Department.
Oh.
Has reviewed the application submitted by the village of Homer for an area variance. Then it says in the third paragraph, village of Homer code. Uh, section two twenty eight dash twelve, R two residential district indicates that C. The following uses are subject to site plan review, excuse me. And approval by the village of planning board. And then they emphasize adult care facilities and adult homes, family type homes for adults. I don't know why, that is why, this is what the planning board can do in the site plan review. I don't understand, nor that really doesn't tell me much as to why, for whatever reason, they're saying an area variance is required.
I'm, I'm not sure that.
Or it's a mistake.
I'm not sure that county planning, they're saying an area variance is required. I think they're taking the application for a vault variance. The application says they, you know, for a vault variance, I think that was a mistake.
I don't know, they're just got here, they're, they're reviewing an application submitted by the village of Homer for an area variance. I don't know, I don't know what we're varying from.
Is that what I already had filled out prior? No?
No.
Like when I was here before?
No, no.
So my concern would be that this is a change of use, but she still wants to use it as. As a, as a nursing home type facility. But she wants to add an adult daycare facility.
Yeah.
So it's an additional use, not a change of use.
Correct. And that is why it falls under the site plan review under the planning board. However, I don't know why, I sort of think it may very well be a mistake that there's a need for an area variance. Because it's not really, Kevin marked it vault under number two, but that, Roman number two, but I don't know what that means.
What's article two?
So Caitlin, you already operate this adult day program on two eighty one, correct?
Yeah, this would just allow me to be able to additionally be able to do like the showers and baths and things like that, we don't have any of those facilities over there.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of people that come even now are saying that that's a need for them. So I thought that would.
Well. Fran. Twenty eight twelve, article two, C, and what they're saying. The following uses are subject to site plan review and approval by the village of planning board. And then you go down here, church plate blah blah blah, then you go down here. Adult care facilities, adult homes. That's family type homes for adults, adult residences, public and private proprietary adult care facilities. So she falls under that.
Right.
And what they're saying is this, we're still at, this is clearly correct.
Yeah.
But you've got to get site plan review before the planning board. This is somewhat questionable, the area there.
See, if I may, just for a quick clarification, I think, um, as I read the county letter, letter is just addressing everything that was said to them. And therefore I will say, and I'll just take it upon myself to accept responsibility, that I think it was a village mistake to put that zoning referral in. It's not needed because clearly the use is already there under, under the code, so therefore it should only be subject to site plan review.
I don't know. Like. Yeah, I, I'm very much inclined to agree because adult care facility, I mean, it's, that's what it is.
And the only thing I don't understand, I don't know, is why Karen and Kevin would have chucked, checked and then put a variance unless he mismarked it. But what I don't understand, were you, did you go to the county planning meeting, Caitlin?
I didn't, they, I guess they sent it on the pass and they don't need to review it.
No, they reviewed it, what they do is that if they send the letter back, sometimes when they feel, they do like a technical letter, and then sometimes they do far more than that. But they obviously reviewed it, at least the, the planning department has, maybe not the planning board. But I don't understand why they're saying an area variance, it could very well be wrong. Could be.
Um, I had, sorry.
Maybe what you could do, whatever you're gonna do, if you're gonna do it tonight or whatever, you just condition any approval. That in the event that a variance is needed, that it's conditioned upon her getting the variance if needed. Uh, and if it's not needed, it's no harm, no foul.
For whatever reason, Kevin did a, uh, abundance of caution thing to put that in there. Um, I, I, I think as it's clear states in the, in our playbook, it's not needed because the use is allowed. You're just dealing with a change of use, therefore you need, you folks need to look at the site plan review. Uh, but if you want to condition it, as Fran said, then let's go right ahead and do it.
County, the county planning board. You know, the appointed board that reviews this stuff apparently did not see this, this was a staff determination.
That's what I'm saying, so that would happen to you, and you, the technical review letter, the county planning department reviews.
Right.
If it's more significant, the county planning board, great example of this, this is coming from the planning department. A family health network was done by the entire planning board.
Um. Well, what is, look, wait.
Yeah, I think we. To accept the fact that it might be actually even a clerical error, then we don't recognize any area variance requirement and. Move ahead with the site plan review. Move ahead with the site plan review.
And just so the conditions that Fran said, and that way she can get them, you know, get rolling here.
On the site.
Go on.
Um, what, where are these, this drop off zones, once you're concerned or anybody's concerned, why, why show us these, um, signage, whatever.
I mean, I think, what, you, you sent, showed samples of signs, just what you're gonna use.
Right.
To indicate where people will drop off, rather than just have them kind of willy-nilly park wherever they want.
Exactly.
It's gonna be designated areas for drop offs and pickups.
Yeah.
And, and there's two of them, as I believe.
Both doors, uh, one of them will go into the dining room, that's wheelchair accessible, and then the flat house, like, something sets.
You know, and from my review of it, it looks like you covered all the bases of, of what needed to be done. It's just, again, like the, the other one where we had, uh, where the applicant. Messed up on the square footage of the lot, and this one here. It looks like code officer just checked the box. I don't know, for whatever reason. But it, uh, it doesn't look like it would, it was already approved. And. I, I, I don't even. I'm, I'm not even sure we need to, we're here, we can do it, but I'm, after reading the code book. I don't think what you're proposing to do even requires us to look at it. Quite frankly, it's adult care. No, no, you read it, it says it's subject to site plan.
So it's, it's a social, it's like a social adult day program, it's not, it's not a home. So it, they are, they are two different things, and I think that they're, um, they have. Who, who does audits for your program, isn't it the Cardinal Health?
Yeah, the same.
Yeah, okay.
It's maybe for a review because it's like a change of use a little bit technically, and sort of a change of use, like a, a store changing. Kind of store it's gonna be, it comes with us for review, that's the case.
In my opinion, that's a stretch, because you know, if, if you've got a store that sells candy and they want to start selling, uh. Uh, dry goods, uh, you're gonna make them come here for a review, you know, I think that's. That's, but anyway, i- if, if you're, if we're in agreement, I think that we can approve this. Application. Adding. The daycare program. Drop off daycare program and weekend respite program to the original approval. Of a family or an adult daycare, an adult home program, is that what we call it?
Yeah, that's all.
An adult. Is, is, is that make sense to people, to the folks here? Okay, so we need to craft a motion to approve it.
Bring us the words, Smith.
But you want to approve it, you just approve, oh, geez, what, what exactly are you calling this?
It's an adult day.
It's a social.
Adult daycare and weekend respite program, so.
Adult daycare and rest.
I wouldn't even limit it to, to weekend, because if somebody wants to drop off. A, a loved one off for two or three days in the middle of the week.
Right.
You can't say, oh, no, we're, you're only allowed to come on weekends.
You're going, if this is what, you're going to have a resolution. That's going to approve of this application requesting an adult. Care, weekend respite, is that what it's going to be?
Not weekend, so.
You know, if you don't. Taking or had, yes.
Is it a social adult day program and respite?
So a social daycare and adult respite.
Yeah.
And, please, whatever the.
We'll make the motions.
Can I just ask an additional question?
Anytime.
Will you be totally moving the program over to Portland Street, or will you have both locations, both, okay?
Just what other location do you have?
On the corner of James Street and two eighty-one, there's a brown office building right there by Rex.
That's already operating?
Yes, we've been there for four years.
Said drop off two, like this?
Yeah, yeah, you just can't obviously, um, offer overnights and all those other items.
So until you get the, the home renovated and up and running.
Mm-hmm.
Will you be using this location, um, for overnights? Until then, for the respite?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's, it's based on the need of the community, you know, so if they need weekend only, that's why we're gonna look at just the weekend. A lot of people like to go away and we, you know, mom and dad for the weekend, so they can go. Um, that's why I said weekend, you know, probably would be the hottest use, but.
You already have approval for that?
What's that?
You already have approval for that?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
And then for the people who are already attending the program on the corner, James and two eighty-one, you're gonna be bringing them there for like showers and stuff.
Yeah, but they, if they need to, they'll probably just switch to the other place if that's a need they have there.
So only drop offs, some pickup, did I read that somewhere?
Do we go out on the bus and pick people up? Yes. But there's also people who are dropped off by the loved one.
Is, is there a, a, make sure, a ratio of more, more drop offs than bus pickups?
Most actually come on our bus, so it's, yeah, we usually go around and we pick a lot of people up, and then we come back and drop off.
So, so that, that a number of movements. Every fifteen minutes is probably on the high side.
Okay.
Yeah, I was asked in, you know, what the maximum, I mean, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Okay, um, any other questions in the discussion? Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, um, how about, motion to approve.
Additional you.
Additional. Forty-six.
I, I guess it would be your motion to approve an adult day program and respite center. Right?
Yes, sir.
Located at. Forty-six Portland Street. Be operated by Porchline Family, one of our allies.
Yeah, okay.
And I think that you said we'd only cover provided that, uh, if a variance is necessary. That before, uh, operation, she would have to get. Whatever variance may be necessary, and I don't know, might be no variance necessary. And that she be, you know, just like we would do with everyone else, if they need a license, they need a license. Like anything else. Right?
Okay, you already have a license, right?
So.
Okay.
Ready?
Okay, that, that, you, you make that motion, that motion, uh, Paul.
Okay.
Is on the tape.
Okay.
So when Maureen goes to prepare the minutes.
Okay.
She can pull it tight from what Fran said off, off the tape, right?
And I'll second that.
Hmm?
I'll second, we'll call it that.
Okay.
So you want me to say it out loud?
We, we got it, whatever, you, you move whatever Fran said.
I moved what Fran said. I'm gonna need this home by the time we give you. Shoot, I have people observing it, and they're like, I reserve states now.
But, uh, discussion. Motion on the floor, any discussion?
Um, so your, the license is not specific to the place you have, and you can use that same license to operate it out here?
No, I have additional, I have, you have to get one per, per address.
And I assume, of course, the bus is all, that whole thing is overseen by some authority, that is, that's properly run bus.
My bus?
Yeah.
It's, I have the insurance and everything. It's not operated your own by anybody.
If there's no other.
It's Porchline Day Program, all.
But i- is, is there a state inspection or somebody that, that checks that, you know, that, you're responsible for, it's like the, uh. Booster House has their bus.
Mm-hmm.
They have a bus, they have to just be insured and follow the rules instead of, you have to have aides, just not caring, you have to have an aide on the bus when you pick these people up, or?
Uh, we don't, usually it's actually an aide that drives, so if there's something that happens, so they're.
Yeah, just curious, yeah.
So I just have an addition, an additional question. Um, do you have to write like safeguards for individuals who are in the program? So like certain supervision levels that are needed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So for anyone who would be forensic, you would have certain safeguards in place for them, okay?
Yeah, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Motion is carried. With approval. Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have, um, again, minutes from. Eighteen minutes?
You're all set, Caitlin?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Scott, I think the only thing we're gonna have to find out from Kevin is that he thinks a variance is part of it, it's not, you're all set. But I can't figure out if it is or not, I don't think there is, but I don't know.
Did we advertise for a ZB inventory? So it would be another month before the ZB.
Kevin will be back next week, so contact Kevin.
Okay.
Paul? I will talk to him as well.
Yes, you're safe.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't have a copy of that in the mail, so I was.
Thank you, Caitlin, and thank you for what you do for this community.
Yes, uh, has everybody had a chance to look over the minutes on February twenty-eighth meeting?
Yes, I, I see that, I think in era here, so, um. First of all, uh, February twenty-eighth, and then there's March thirteen.
Let's do February twenty.
Yeah, but they.
What year am I?
On March thirteen, I watched the chair, and it was a line there, so it's chairman Michael Pollak called a meeting to order.
What, didn't you run the meeting?
I ran one meeting, and that's, and it shows that, that.
Okay, I, I, okay, so on the, on the thirteenth, the correction is. I didn't get a chance to read it, so, the first one, we're okay with. But we, the February twenty-eighth, are we okay with that?
I think so.
Very simple. Okay, uh. Motion to approve the February twenty-eighth max. So, Mike. Ashley second?
I wasn't here, so I don't think I can.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
You can. I can, whatever.
Paul?
Yes.
Made a signal, all in favor?
Aye.
I was here on Zoom, so I think.
I thought that we, we talked about this once before, even if you weren't here, you're supposed to review. What happened at the meeting, and that you kind of proved them.
Yeah, I, I, actually, I, you, even if you, you weren't here, you're gonna prove the minutes. Stay away, that's just, at this point, they, yeah, stay away.
Because if you think this thing logically, suppose if one of the, later time someone challenged something. And the minutes turned out to be long, and you voted for it, and you weren't here.
Okay, so.
Yeah, well, I, I, I don't understand the person we just approved, I think they approved it already, didn't we? What's the last page about, Chair Parrish asked to do an impact statement for him? You weren't there, well, you weren't, you were there by doing.
Environmental impact. Ask for clarification from Maureen. Pardon me, you asked for clarification from Maureen? That's our draft. Okay, yeah, all right, because this is a draft, that's right. Actually, we shouldn't be approving these. Because they're only draft. No, you have to prove, you have to prove draft, that, that's what makes them final. But if there's clarifications and or omissions, additions, then you do that, you just put that, put them in the motions. Paul, are we, are you here or are you abstaining?
From who?
From the February twenty.
I was here.
Okay.
We're just confused because this says on the very last page.
That's, that's what we're talking about, is, is that.
It says member Niderman, but she wasn't even here.
Store thing.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And she's married, but that's okay. We gotta get Robin's name in there.
Actually, uh, I think Maureen sometimes has difficulty.
Here, yeah.
Figuring out who was talking.
Got it.
And if I don't, if I don't say. Actually, or Paul, or Jessica, or.
So, so Dan, maybe there's some other improvement that could be made, that I have looked over her shoulder, she asked me to try to figure out what I shared. And, and looking all these different videos of these meetings, they, they don't have clear data on them, I think, identification of what they are. We gotta get into them first, open them up, and then see that this is.
No, but they're dated, what, what they are, TV, they have the dates out of their date timestamps and, and dated, so that's, that's done. Uh, sometimes we'll put transcripts in them, sometimes that transcript doesn't work so well, and we're working with that on Zoom. But if, if there's question on, say, the February twenty-eight minutes, don't approve them, we'll ask you for clarification. We can just, we, we can prove them next time, that's fine, that's, it's not a problem. Okay, so. We'll, we'll look for a clarification on page three on the, the February twenty. So don't just don't approve, and it'll be our next one. Okay, great, thank you. So now, let's, let's move on to the March thirteenth meeting.
So that one has got Chairman Michael Pollak, so I think it should say Chairman.
Did we ever, this wall designed, I mean, on House thirteen, are they ever gonna get back to us with this wall design, or is that just in the future?
They, the wall design was to be approved by Tim Buehl and. Kevin McMahon.
The wall, the wall they're there on the side.
Yes.
You can see it on.
Yeah.
But what they look like was supposed to be approved by us.
I, I said, I, I think we, we.
I think if there were any major changes in, in their original design, then they were gonna consult. I, because I motioned that, I, I was like, no, we want to see what they look like, and I believe Mike was with me on that.
I, you know, but I think that we did not want to delay the project until we could have a meeting to look at the wall. And the, the Kevin and Tim Buehl were of the consensus that they knew. Kevin assured us at that meeting that he knew what we were looking for, that we didn't want a blank wall. That we wanted some kind of a texture, and that texture that they had is bowling balls.
It was like, yeah, it looks like stones, but it doesn't look like stone.
No, but it's, it's similar to what was used, uh, in Burnberry. And.
And I don't, I, I would want to see the tape because I know, I, I know I said something, I was adamant about it, and we, because and I believe that Kevin sat over there and even said, um, the board wants to see what they, what it looks like. They wanted to go forward, we said that they could go forward, but when it came to the wall, we wanted to see what it looked like.
So.
And we wanted to see the line, so I, I don't, I'm sorry.
Well, no, my, my recollection is that we, we wanted somebody to review them, I think, to, to, to rush it through. But I don't see any of that discussion here, that's concerning to me, and I don't understand these motions that were carried. So, um, member Harder, I, I, the planning board to schedule a special meeting on March thirteenth, oh, how does that work? This is March thirteenth.
Yeah.
This isn't a special meeting, so he's doing what the member harder offered.
The, the, that stuff must, I think, should have been from the February twenty-eighth meeting.
A man of.
Yeah, see, if you read, I, I, acting chair Pollak, membership, Woody and Harder and Harrington.
Okay.
Next one down, the, the pages got put in the wrong file. I think their drafts obviously had some issues, so I wouldn't approve either one of them, and it's just okay, just that time of the office with various things, so mistakes were made, mistakes were made, but they will be corrected.
Okay. Okay, I'll stop in.
So should we see a, a mock of the wall?
No, and I know, I know, I, I, I rolled the tape because I'm telling you that I was adamant.
So what I reme, what I remember is what's in here. And I, I, and I do remember you saying that you wanted, you wanted more detail. But it's a richer have a basic design, and if any changes need to be made, the basic design will not have any major changes.
You're talking about the, the look and design of the wall, right?
Yeah.
Let me get ahold of Timmy Jewell tomorrow and say, hey, look.
I've seen one up there.
Collection of the planning board being able to comment on the design and the look of the wall. Let me talk with him tomorrow and find out what's going on.
They, they said during the meeting that the contractor would have, they would use what product they normally use, they didn't want to limit it to um, something that was gonna be more expensive. Um, because different products cost different money, I, I remember.
I remember him saying that, but I said when it comes to the look and what, what we wanted to see. And, um, I know that Kevin said something, and I'm pretty sure Mike was with me, and then someone, my partner was leading over here, I was like, absolutely not. Not just gonna put up something that we're gonna have to live with for the rest of our lives, and somebody brought up some other town that this just happened in, and it some other.
Let me get ahold of Tim.
So I don't.
I, I think, I think you look at the tape, the, the discussion, though, that, that we, that, that, uh, Tim could be some other part of it, Tim and Kevin were supposed to review, and Kevin knew what we wanted to see in a wall. And then for the board's navigation, you could review all these meetings on our village YouTube page, so you don't need to have access to tapes, all the, they're all up there for them.
I wasn't here.
I was just saying, if he wants to.
Yeah, if he wants it, great, thank you.
I'll go home and roll the tape, because we're five minutes. So I'm all in the images, I know, I don't even see what they have up there, I've seen I've seen what they have up there, but I don't see that on any, in any of these images to even show anybody.
Do we have a reaction to it? Like it, not like it?
I'm not in love with that.
I gotta go see it.
I haven't, all I see is a bunch of dirt, I mean, I don't know, I, I don't.
Well, they got the, the blocks are stacked up, but not in position, I mean, they're, they're on site. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Move, move to adjourn. Second?
I'm second.
Second, Ashley, all in favor?